Special meeting. We don't have the mic or the mayor. We'll wait a minute. All right. Ready to go. Yes, sir. We were waiting on you to get in your seat. All right, so called order special meeting called by the mayor Tuesday, July 25th to discuss the upcoming budget. We'll start with a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved second.
We have a first by Mr. Glavin, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Six to zero. Mr. Guines is out of the room. We'll start with the mayor's report.
Let me report for the mayor until he's here. Before you at your place, they'll you should have a book that we'll use to guide you through the next couple of weeks of budget meetings. I think this is what we tried to do a couple of years back and I think it's a little smoother. Just gives you a chance to carry that over. Now, we realize you're just getting these numbers today. But in the schedule that revised schedule I put at your place earlier shows that we have a workshop today and we have a workshop the following Tuesday for the same topic. So if we don't get into the detail today that you need, we've got another meeting, next meeting also for the same topic. What we're going to go through today is we're going to start with revenue. If you look in the tab revenue, this is the revenue sheet that it's actually a repeat of what I gave you at the last meeting. So you've seen this, these numbers before. Diana's here to explain and answer any of your questions. I think the important thing is to look in your book at that revenue tab. Look at our budget for this year, our revised budget for this year. Then the percentage collected so far to date and each of those periods. And I think I would really pay attention to the big hitters. And then you'll see our 2023 forecasted revenue that we're going to end up with. And then the projected 2024 revenue. And you see that bottom column that adds up to 72 million. This is general fund only. So that's our going in number. I think that's where any budget starts with. It starts with a, at least a recognition of about how much money you got to spend. Do you have any questions about the revenue?
We'll start, we'll start on this end, Mr. Glavin.
I have a question. So there's a recently announced proposed sale and maybe it goes into this year, but of the Covet Street potential grocery development. Where would that fund, the 200,000 be recognized at? Okay? Okay, the other question I have on, did we do an analysis of any of the tax abatements that are rolling off in this budget year? And did we net that out in the revenue? Everything is completed and accounted for in this budget as far as new taxes that we'll be collecting now from those abatements. There are no other abatements for this budget year. Okay. All right, that's a couple of questions I had, so.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, this, this is just a formatting question. If, if you look at the next, next tab as an example, which is departmental summary. You see, for example, under administration, personal services, supplies, services, contractual, capital outlay. Could we have that same, a similar format for revenue where it would be broken down to ad valorem licenses and permits the way it's done in the annual audit?
Isn't that what we have?
No, no, basically, I think last year was the first year. We just got a list of revenue sources from the largest heavy hitters, all the way down to the folks at the low end of the revenue totem pole. But I'd like, I'd like, I don't know if the other council members would like in that format, but it would help me to get a better picture historically and what we've done in the past and what we're looking at this year. If it was formatted in that manner, is that a gargantuan task to do? And I'd like hair plug donors. The, that's, that's really all at this point. I just, I'd like to, if I get a copy in that format, it would help me understand this a little better. Thank you.
Mr. Demming? Any discussion?
I have not developed any questions yet.
All right, Ms. Newman? All right, 30 seconds, Mr. Lawrence.
You can forget that one, Daddy. On the court fines, are we going to be down that much money again? We're not collecting much of it. We budgeted 414,000. So we, and we adjusted, it looked like the 320. David, you're good. Yeah, you could help us, David. Come on.
At this point.
Could you please sign in and state your name?
Y'all know me. You know, there are some challenges we've had with the court system and the way, you know, the, the tickets and some of the other fine operations work. But we're working diligently on what, you know, from the judge's aspect that gets people attention, you know, at this point in time. They, the folks who are fined, you know, don't really have an incentive to to pay those fines and that's why, you know, it's been down. But we're working, I think within the next two or three months, we'll understand where our position will be. We'll be better able to predict it. Right now, I think Diane has been very conservative. We don't want to be, you know, we'll be pleasantly surprised not, you know, not the other way around. So there's some opportunity to kick it up and you'll see the results in the numbers. David, you know, I mean, that's a pretty fair statement. The conversations we've had with, you know, the county officials, jail officials and the state people. You know, there's been some opportunities to work with the state on how much, you know, they receive, you know, of whatever fines are paid. But it's definitely been going in the wrong direction because of conditions.
Yeah, I know we had a hard time, kind of like you said, we handle, you can't put them in jail, we had no place to put them.
We're working on that.
Yeah, so I know we, we look after the new upcoming election or anything and make that when you open up more people. They may have to pay the fine when you thought put them in jail.
Well, I think that's the message that's gotten across. It's been repeated in court and, you know, in the departments. And, you know, it's, you know, we're being conservative in our numbers, but I think that the outlook, we expect things to get better.
Well, I notice it costs X amount of dollars a run. Do we have maybe too many people for what we're doing right now?
Let me give you a real example. Think the state, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, charges for state prisoners $20 a head. I think we paid 35, right? And so our jail system is doing it cheaper than the state can. You know, if, if you look at just pure numbers, we're 24, 26. something percent of the county. And you would think we'd get 26. something percent of the beds that are ready for, you know, for those folks. We're pushing that direction. Think we did get their attention. We had a couple of good meetings with, with a lot of folks. And I think the department, Representative Kevin Felschuk got, you know, got some balls moving with regard to moving state prisoners back to their, you know, the penitentiary. So freeing up some space and we're expecting positive results when it comes to being able to, you know, give folks consequences about not paying fines and multiple offenses and so forth. And I think the big thing is the judges are in sync with, you know, the Anderson County folks. So once it's decreed, we don't want frequent flyers. And frequent flyers will be visiting, you know, the home front there, we hope.
Yeah, I know it's something that you've been working on. We've all been looking at that because it went from break even thing to losing, you know, a million dollars a year. So we don't want to keep doing that either, you know? So. The next one was all these homeland securities. What does that represent? There's about four or five of them.
Those are grants from the police and fire department.
Money we received?
Right, for grants.
And then passes on to them?
Yes.
To the police department.
We'll have these books with us right on through the, the end of the budget negotiation. So if there's some, a revenue question that comes up in future meetings, you'll have the book with you and you can go back and look at it.
I have a couple while Councilman Lawrence is looking over safer grants. Any opportunity for safer grants or there's no opportunity? Chief? You gotta wait a year or, okay, all right, thank you. Sorry, Councilman Lawrence.
I'll check on you doing that. Check in the next page.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale has another question. While you're looking, George, we'll go back to him.
June financial report is the monthly report, is that out yet, Diana? But if you would shoot it to me when it's available. Thank you, appreciate it.
I have a quick, so if I'm looking at this correctly, last year we did a, through Public Works, we did 806,000 in contractual services. We're opening that to 896 this year. Is that correct? It's on page three underneath the Public Works tab at the very bottom. Line 01611.
Yeah, ahead of us here, hadn't called all for Public Works yet.
What was it?
Okay, contractual services. Last year, 806, we're increasing that by basically $90,000 to 896 this year. Correct?
That's correct. It has some changes in it as well. Right now, there is a Mississippi power lease, a light lease. That's in electricity, but it's really not electricity. And it's moving to this line item and it itself is 96,000.
So is that that difference or will that increase this to 900 and so?
No, no, it's included in that 896.
Okay, so we really don't have an increase in contractual services then?
Well, his contractual services is beast on projects that he has in.
So what I would like to see, I would like, because this is something, especially with us seeing the shortages that we're seeing in manpower and public works. I would like to see a breakdown of contractual services because this is something, if we don't have enough in there to get some of these projects done, I think that that's, we need to look at some adjustments there as far as our ditches and things of that matter that we just don't have enough manpower to keep up with right now. So if I can get a breakdown of the contractual services, what they are and then what portion of that is actually going to hiring companies, outside companies to do some of these jobs that we don't have the capacity to do right now.
So the company that mostly does this work is called Bottom to Top?
Yes, yeah, and they're doing a job right now at an Eagle Point that.
Bottom to Top Engineering. What's your, what's your bottom line on bottom to top expenditures so far?
1.6 million.
1.6 million this year already. That includes infrastructure.
And that's, some of that may be included in that Public Works number, but some of that's.
But that's coming from different pots then because 1.6 is way more than the 806.
Yes, that's, yes, some of it comes out of capital projects, some of it comes out of.
Can we get a breakdown? What my point is, I just want to see what we're going to have available to hire these companies for these outside jobs that we're not, because we, I mean, it's, I know it's the elephant in the room, but we have a problem with manpower in Public Works. And, and it's, it's something, if we can't get the manpower, we have to find a way to address this. I believe the answer is through, is through this avenue is hiring companies to take care of some of these things that we aren't able to keep up with at this point. And so if we can get a breakdown, wherever it's, the different pots it's coming from, if we can get a breakdown of this to where we can ensure in this budget that we have the money to take care of some of these things that aren't getting taken care of because of lack of manpower.
The upside, the upside of that, that approach, you know, we're 100% in sync with you. But we're going to reach out, not just bottom to top, you know, some of the normal services that we provide, but some very specific ditch, you know, capacity to, you know, to clean these things and perform in a timely way. So while I'm making some inquiries into some, you know, non-traditional service companies that can provide that, like contracting companies. You clearly grub those, those things. And so we're going to get some, some actuals that, you know, have the capacity to pull, you know, pull the resources in a timely manner on top of a specific problem that we may be, you know, shortly addressing or coming up.
And the reality, this is not a shot at Public Works. Our guys are working their butts off out there, but the bottom line is.
I have enough hours in the day for people to do it.
They can only work so many hours. And with the limited amount of manpower we have, they can only cover so much stuff. And so, you know, if you take the number of men we have mowing grass, for instance, and then the amount of grass that we have in this city, there's just no way to keep up. And that's just the.
Balance of people on, you know, on board versus overtime with people who want to work. So I mean, there's a delicate kind of, I go outside or I do stress, you know, our folks a little bit more, those there'll be, you know, so many people that want to do, they work as much, you know, if you make money shoveling oysters, you want to shovel as many oysters as you can.
That's good.
And so I think that's the approach we're taking. Outside versus overtime versus on-staff people.
Okay, so Mr. Lawrence, okay, are you wanting to talk about this?
Yeah, exactly.
We'll go to Mr. Demming.
Well, I, I think it was 2015, it might have been your first term or your first year of your first term. It may have been the next year, but we talked about this in the budget sessions. And, and I think after that first year, Mike came to me after a meeting and said, you know what? We saved, we went to this contractual services program. We saved a quarter of a million dollars that first year. And he said, look, we're going to try to expand that and go to do, do more. Apparently we have. And I think what we want to see is a capitalized budget that shows how we're going to grow this and what we're able to grow this to. I know we have some restrictions on some things that private companies can't do that only the city can do. Is there any way to get a breakdown of those services that, that we can provide through contractual services versus the ones that we can't?
We'll work on that, you know.
And Mayor, one of the things that I think engineering would back me up on this and Public Works as well. We've got one company, one company that's doing a million and a half dollars worth of work. We really need multiple companies because we're, we're overworking the one company we've got.
Well, it's, it's been, you know, the amount of resources they can dedicate. Some things you can do in a better time of year based on other, you know, other companies being able to have some excess capacity that they want to fill with service. So we may be able to do some timing of what we got to do. Ditch cleaning, you know, other things that can be done.
I mentioned in an earlier meeting that I serve on the Development Commission. And the Development Commission has a lot of ditches in their, in their work areas. And they have a ditch cleaning contract that we've obtained in the last 24 hours that Keith Christie's working on putting that, putting that something together for, for us. That so we can order ditches by the lineal foot. And we just need to get a good scope of work, so we got a nice tight contract.
I just think that if.
No doubt, we're, we're heading in a direction of doing more things with contractors.
I just think if we can get, get our, get wrapped around this issue, this is the main thing, and speaking for me, and I'm sure that the rest of the councilmen will agree with me, this is the main issue that we have and the biggest concern that we have from our constituents is this. And, you know, that, that should be our first job is taking care of our constituents. So I believe that, that whatever we have to do this budget year, we need to get it right. If it takes a little bit of time, so be it. But we need to get it right to where we, you know, make sure that going forward, we're able to take care of these ditches and the roads and stuff. And, you know, the combination of our guys and other people, I think, is the answer to that. And if there's nothing else on this, I think that George probably has about 30 seconds left, so.
On, on the B News, that's a pretty, everybody got used to that magazine and stuff like that. Do we have anybody actually selling the ads for that magazine? That goes to everybody every month. That should be huge.
Right, and as we're looking at every angle, how we can, you know, maximize the impact and minimize the cost, yeah. You know, I think there's a little bit of hustle in those ads. And we're trying to, you know, in this, in this cycle, figure out what's the best bang for the buck as far as paper weight, number of pages, the distribution, those kinds of things. But, you know, of course, the revenue is a big part of it. That, you know, you look at, I don't know how many pages, John, but, you know, it's all part of, you know, the game plan, you know, to offset that valuable service. I think, you know, the offset to things hurricane season as well as water quality, that's what we have to do. Before B News, we had to do that and it cost X amount of dollars. And that cost has probably expanded, you know, if we had to do it alone. But, you know, if you can offset it with some, some advertisement and, you know, different ways, we need to look at every angle. But nobody's on the phone 24 hours a day trying to sell ads, but, you know, if we can, you know.
You're talking about goes every home, once a month? Well, you know, 12, 12 times, that's.
Goes to more than every home. It goes to.
But you can't get better advertised than that.
It's a valuable component.
One thing I'd mention to council and that is that this is your magazine too. And if you have issues that you want us to cover, we're always looking for, you know, some, something that our citizens would be interested in.
I think that every month, we should remind the residents that only eight cubic yards of trash gets, or debris gets picked up each round by Pelican. You have people, yeah, per stop. You have these people that go out and they just put these massive mounds of trash out there and expect them to come and fill their, the entire truck up with what they put out by the road. And so I think that, you know, a constant reminder that that eight cubic yards per pick, per week is all they're going to get picked up. And so encourage them to put it out there in phases instead of all at one time. That's just something that, that's an ongoing issue, especially in my ward where we have a lot more trees than most other places.
Pelican has been pretty, you know, good to work with as far as a lot of folks, if there's a vacant lot, they put, you know, across the street, they put it in a vacant lot and sometimes it gets missed. But, you know, they were good in putting some notifications on why it's still there. But if they know that the account where the trash can is and you're going to see a pile of debris from where that account is, they've been pretty good about picking it up.
And Allen Lane has been a great asset as well as for, as far as communication between, between those two things.
I got a question back on revenue and there's a couple of things. One is short-term rental, it's basically zeroed out and it had close to, can't remember the number, but it had, had a significant number. Do we not expect any, any revenue from short-term rental? That's, that's my first question. And I got a second revenue question to follow up.
It actually posts to certificate of occupancy?
So it's re-categorized?
It's in a different area, yeah.
Different category. And then my next one is your gaming revenues. There's increases in sales tax rebate, ad valorem taxes, personal property tax, but there's no increase for gaming. And, and, you know, our tourism has been pretty good. And so should there be a little bit? I mean, less than 1% would, would put us at, I mean, $300,000 increase year over year. And we're hitting, we're almost hitting the forecast according to this report, you know, of last year. Should we increase that a little bit?
I could kind of answer that. You know, we were very aggressive last year in, in the dollars that we did estimate. And, you know, to parlay it and, you know, say we're going to do it again. You know, this is three record years in a row we were expecting. You know, so I don't want to go way out on a limb, but, you know, it, all indications are favorable. And, you know, I held it back, you know.
Okay, no, no problem there, but perhaps we keep, keep that in our hip pocket as we work through this budget, thinking that maybe that's a little understated with all these other indexes going up besides that one. And that's a major one, you know, perhaps. And I'm gleaning through the revenue. Revenue looks almost on target, but I, I just think that, you know, if we have a projected sale that's certain or if we think gaming may inch up a little bit more, that may be two items that will allow us to get the, the revenue, you know, right. And I'll, I'll wait for the next, I don't know what department we're going to go over next, but I'll, I'll reserve any additional comment until we get there.
On the, on the sales of assets, we've got less than 208,000. What do you actually sell there?
I'm not sure, Peter. What made the number up, you know, Diane? Sale of assets, which assets were we talking about selling?
We had an auction this past fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
And we sold a lot of vehicles.
You're talking about property, real property and some of those other things? They're both, real property in that one.
In real property, we sold cemetery plots that we won't have next year to sell.
That was 20,000 according to that, is it more than that?
I thought we sold a little more than 20,000 and I thought it was a little more than that.
I don't need to answer to this.
It's in real property.
Well, I think the last one was supposed to be like 25,000. There's 71 plots or something like that. That was laughing, so it should be way more than, that's 40,000. When I said one side, they had 20,000.
If I may, if we don't, I didn't mean to jump around quite as much, but one of the things that Mr. Barrett was suggesting earlier was, you know, the shortage of people and.
How does that happen?
One of the public works requirements is that they need, if they're not going to have more people, they need the right equipment. And if you look back on that tab under Public Works, you'll notice there's quite a substantial amount of additional equipment. Special, specialty mowers. Billy Ray can tell you about that they, that they don't have today. Grapple truck, another grapple truck to go around and pick up trash. So I think what we're trying to do is balance bodies with equipment. There's a pretty substantial list of equipment there. And it's by department, so you can see which department was getting. And I'm, I'm sure you'll, when we meet next, you may have some questions about some of that equipment, so.
I know we're sort of jumping all over the place. And, and I guess after we have time to review what we got, you know, next week, we're going to be visiting the same thing. One thing I would like to point out, which is not a question, is we're projecting an 8.8% increase in ad valorem. And so we haven't raised taxes in forever, which is amazing. And I don't think we should raise taxes, but we basically had a built-in tax increase with the, with the, with, with the increase of values of properties to the tune of way more than, than an actual tax increase would be.
The value of a mill went up there because of assessed valuation, I think.
Yeah, and so, you know, we're, we're going to, we're projecting basically 9% increase.
In real property.
In, in a year.
And car parks and mobile homes and those kinds of things. That's all component. I'm not sure what the assessed value, Diana, you know, went up, but, you know. You should, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty impressive.
Council President, can we jump?
What is the value of the shitty mill now? 700,000 or something?
Value of a mill is for.
What's the value of the shitty mill?
730.
737, she said.
737,000?
That's what a, that's what a mill generates.
Based on this lesson.
Okay, Mr. Leonard?
I was going to say, we go to the police tab. We've got some people sitting here that I'd love to tell you about their department.
All right, let's, let's do that.
What you're going to see in each one of these departments is they're going to all read the same. There's going to be a summary sheet first. You see the summary sheet? And then there's the sheet that has the operating expenses in the detail year over year. And all these by department. And then there's a personnel, personnel sheet. So with, uh, with that, Chief, what do you got to tell us about what you need? Police tab.
I'll give you a minute to look it over and then.
Looking for this personnel tab. We don't want, we don't have the one that shows the vacancies. Salary, salary sheet, yeah.
Chief, um, one of the things that, as you get into your report, that sticks out when I'm trying to gain a little bit of information is the condition of your vehicles. There seems to be a concern that they're outdated or they're, they're, we're, we're using, uh, some of the vehicles that may be, be, they should be taken out of service and replaced. Can you speak to that before we get into your budget?
Absolutely. So, uh, as, as you know, the price of vehicles has drastically gone up. And then the availability of vehicles for the last few years has been very difficult. We've not been able to buy vehicles. Uh, one year we didn't buy any vehicles at all. Uh, so that, that's kind of put us in a position. Now we've hired some new people. And, uh, here very soon, we're not going to have enough vehicles to, uh, for officers to, to get in. And the fleet that we have is aging. We usually buy ten or twelve a year, uh, maybe fifteen. We've done that a couple of years. Uh, but they're aging. They're costing money now to keep them running. Uh, we've pretty well pieced everything together that we can. And some of the vehicles, you're right, should not be used on a regular basis. We try to reserve those vehicles for the officers that we bring in from out of town to work big events. We have to put them in a vehicle also. So we've tried to, tried to reserve those vehicles so they're not driven all the time, just driven when there's somebody here. So on the budget today, uh, you'll see, I think there's twenty-nine vehicles, not counting two ATVs. Uh, that's the most vehicles we've ever asked for. And that's, uh, that accounts for a huge part of the capital, uh, items that you see.
So my question, Chief, where does that get you as far as being able to operate without, with, without using these outdated vehicles?
So we're, we're still going to have to use some outdated vehicles. Uh, but that will get us to a point where we can put vehi, we can put officers in vehicles that we feel like are reliable to be operator on a daily basis.
One of the competitive guidelines we try and follow is that twenty percent of the fleet gets replaced each year. That's especially going to be true for the patrol fleet, which is on the move all the time. So twenty percent of the vehicles is what he's going to build to.
And I, and I can appreciate that, but then that may be the rule, rule of thumb or the standard, but if, if, if you assess your fleet and it needs to be more than twenty percent, we need to figure that out. You know, I don't know how we put the round peg in the square hole, but we got to have reliable vehicles.
Thank you. I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And so what we did this year, we just looked at the vehicles we know are not going to be operational next year. Or the ones that we feel like, uh, uh, we don't need to operate on a daily basis. Like I said before, that's where we came up with the twenty-nine vehicles. Uh, this certainly won't give us an, uh, 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 an overabundance of vehicles, but it, it will level the playing field for us.
Quick question. So I see you're basically jumping, um, three million dollars in budget. Is most of that?
Just.
What, what we're discussing now, most of that three million dollar increase is, is going to be in, um, vehicles and?
Yep. Some, most of it's in, in capital vehicles. And then, uh, there, there were some, you know, we did add some officers this year, so there's some salary gains in there also.
So we're, we're, I think optimum, we're like one, we're at a hundred and sixty-something officers. Is that correct?
No, that, that's where we should be.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we should be around one sixty-five.
And what are we budgeted for? And how many do we currently have?
So I think we're budgeted right now.
So that's going to put us around the one forty mark.
That'll put us around.
Which is better than where we have been. We've been running around that one thirty for a long time. Okay.
No, but just keep in mind that our goal is, is one sixty-five.
One sixty-five.
Events that we have and not necessarily counting our, 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 our population that live here, but we have to count the population that's here on a daily basis.
In the city, yeah. So optimum's one sixty-five. We're budgeted for around one fifty-five and we're going to have around one forty. But, so that gives us the room to hire fifteen more?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that, that again, accounts for some of the increase that you saw. I'm sorry, Councilman.
So a hundred and sixty-five is what you're shooting for and you'll have about a hundred and forty in, in the near future.
Yes, sir.
Um, you're talking about vehicles and twenty-nine vehicles. Somebody's got to point me to where that is, where that figure is in the budget, because.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm not an accountant.
Well, it's in the.
It's in the capital projects tab.
Okay, so different. Okay, I'll find it listed there.
The thing to remember about police vehicles is a police vehicle alone does you no good. You're going to have the vehicle and you got to have all the equipment that goes with it. And that basically doubles the price of, of police vehicle.
And what is, what is that dress style? What do they cost? Fifty-five thousand?
Um, yeah, they're running a, a, around fifty thousand and then you're looking at probably another, uh, depending on where the vehicles go, and another twenty-five thousand to outfit, you know, with cage, radar.
Yeah, so they'd be.
Cameras, right.
Running fifty or fifty-five, what would it be? So it's pretty much thirty times that.
Yes, sir.
Just for the cars, you know?
Yes, sir.
That's gotta be a million and a half.
It is, it is, uh, yeah, million, uh, million five.
Yeah. I mean, that's half your.
That's half of it.
After three meetings, huh? How about any other vehicles other than, these are pretty much patrol cars, right?
These are, these are all the vehicles that we need. I think there's a couple of animal control vehicles in there. They've, they were, they're about worn out. Uh, there's some, a couple of detective vehicles in there. Uh, I think there's, uh, one for narcotics and then the, the majority of them are for patrol and then there's two ATVs.
Yeah, no, the, those are, that'd probably more, those vehicles.
Some of them are.
Narcotics, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'll fill in the dead air. Um. How, how was our pay? I know Ocean Springs, they made the headlines here lately and Ocean Springs, uh, bumped up their, I guess their initial pay for sworn officers. And are we close to that or are they?
We're, we're a little below Ocean Springs in, in your, uh, your initial starting pay. We're a little below.
Okay, um.
Ins- insurance with, with us and Ocean Springs is, is pretty well the same. They're one of the few cities around that have, uh, an insurance plan like we do.
Okay.
What is the difference like in our pay than their pay right now?
Uh, it's, it's.
They had the increase.
Yeah, in, in the door, it's, uh, it's, it's three or four thousand dollars more in the door.
Per person.
The entry fee.
Yeah.
Longevity pay. What is that expected to cost us this year? What have we budgeted for that? Overall? Sure, the, yeah, the whole nine yards.
It's almost eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
That's for the all employees, right?
Yes, for all eligible employees.
And what does, all right, so what does a one percent pay increase for all the employees, you may have to calculate, I don't know if you can calculate it off the top of your head. What, what does that cost the city for every one percent in salary increase for all the employees?
Probably four hundred thousand a bed.
I'm, I'm thinking somewhere around four hundred thousand, but I don't know if that's accurate.
Five hundred and thirty?
Five hundred and thirty.
But that's nuts.
That's pers and.
Well, it's probably overstated a little bit because this figure includes insurance as well, and that wouldn't get a percentage increase.
So about five hundred thousand?
Maybe.
A good number.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Chief Miller? I know we're going to come back next week after we look over this better. Does anyone have any, any other questions for Chief Miller?
Yeah, I may have.
Better chance to look at it.
Okay, so let's, let's move to, uh, the fire department real quick and we'll get some questions there. And then same thing, everybody will review. And then we'll come back next week with, with, uh, questions that we come up with after we reviewed everything.
Appreciate the book. I think that makes a difference.
Yeah, the tabs help a lot.
The important thing for, uh, to know about the fire department is the, uh, the capital equipment, in, in particular, the ladder truck that we ordered last year that'll come in and be paid for this, this next budget year.
All right, I guess I'll, I'll jump.
You'd see that back in the back of your book, under, uh, under the capital tab, little fire department.
I mean, you said it was, might be the two or three of them.
We're only getting, uh, it's just one, just one, one ladder truck.
So.
But so many years in a row we get one.
Two years ago, we got two new trucks. This year we got three new trucks. And this next budget year, you're going to get one ladder truck for a million bucks.
So, real quick, I, just looking at the front page, I see a two and a half million dollar decrease from last year to this year. Just where's that, where's that hitting us at?
So I think some of that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that would be taking the one point five of the, is that the building, um, station five renovation? What does that decrease? Okay.
Yeah, we.
Six hundred thousand salaries.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're losing. He said.
You know, we didn't get the safer, safer grant, but we had already put fifteen vacancies into the budget. We didn't get the safer grant. We don't, not projecting, projecting we're getting a safer grant this year, so we took some of those positions back.
Okay, so we rolled some of those back that we.
Correct, yes.
We put them in the budget just in case we got the grant, but those weren't filled.
Yeah, so basically we discussed this budget year, three to five year plan, uh, maintaining current, uh, minimum staffing levels. Uh, and bringing our, our shifts to a, to a reasonable level where we can reduce some of the overtime. And then in the following years, as we go forward, trying to add four to six positions, you know, over three to five years, which would get us to a, a better position.
So same question I asked Chief, optimum, how many firefighters do we have?
Uh, right now, each shift is running about fifty.
No, I'm saying optimum. What would it be if we were staffed to like what we one hundred percent would need?
Oh, well, uh, it all depends on where you all want to go with the fire rating. Um, but no, uh, optimal for our, our minimum staffing levels right now would be anywhere between fifty-four to fifty-six per shift. Right now, we're sitting at fifty. Uh, with four on the line and about to hire another six.
So we're, we're relatively close.
We're getting close for what we want to maintain right now.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Anyone else have any questions?
How many, uh, do you have total in your department? The whole fire department?
So everybody, including, uh, office staff, chiefs, everything, we are looking at roughly one fifty on shift work and another eighteen, uh, upfront. So.
Hundred sixty-eight?
Yes, sir.
One of the patterns you find between police and fire in this budget is, uh, a lot of youth, I started to say youths, youths. We have a very young and much younger than a year ago and two years ago, younger fire department and police department because of the turnover. Uh, it's, we got a lot, I don't want to say rookies out there, but we've got a lot of first year, second year, uh, police and fire. Huge turnover. Um, thankfully, that is, we've, we've really been able to, to, uh, recruit both police and fire better this year than we have in the past.
Is that, is that, um, because of a lot of people retiring or people leaving to go to other places or a culmination of both?
So basically what we're seeing is that ninety-nine, two thousand timeframe is when the city did a lot of, uh, annexation. We expanded, we added pretty much three new fire stations, which had to be staffed. Um, you know, that was ninety-nine, two thousand. We're in twenty twenty-three, rolling into twenty-four. These guys came from other departments, so they were able, they're, they're eligible to retire. Um, I think about a year ago, when I came to these budget meetings, we were about thirty-three percent of the entire department could retire that day. Um, I think now with some of the roll-off, because we've been, uh, if Jill was in here, she could attest to it. I think we've got a firefighter calling her pretty much every day for the past year, looking at, um, retiring. So we've had a lot leave. We've added two, a lot of young guys, uh, and girls. So, um, it's just, it's just that cycle that we're getting into because of the wool market expansion twenty-plus years ago.
Okay. All right, yeah, I have a few.
Now, both police and fire, when they put their budget together, included some capital items that we've pulled out and, and are putting into capital projects separate. For example, in the police department, they need a new roof for the, for the safety center, eight hundred thousand dollars. That was in their budget originally. We pulled it out and it'll be a capital project.
So is it in the list of projects here in the back? Not yet?
Not yet, it will be.
All right.
Uh, in addition to that, in the police department, there are two giant generators right outside the, you've visited there.
Right.
They're overdue, um, failing, will fail, and those are also capital, will be in capital projects. In the fire department, we've got fire station number five, which is a, an estimated million and a half dollars. It was in the budget originally. We pulled it out. It is a capital project already. So, um, I think I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that those are going to be capital projects that will be.
Okay.
Would you say that price on the fire station number five? Would you say that was? You said on fire station number five?
Uh, the best guess we have is a, a million and a half dollars. That was, an estimate was done before the works.
Million and a half?
That, that one's going to be ready to go out to bid, probably next month.
And roof, the roof on the public safety center you talking about?
We'll have to do a competitive bid, but it, um, but we've got a, we've got a good quote from Mandell. So we know it's going to be in the eight hundred thousand to a million dollar range.
That's the public safety building, right?
Safety building.
So how does our pay stack up against, again, Ocean Springs just increased their firefighter pay?
Uh, we're, we're comparable. Um, they have a little bit different system. They, uh, they run a Kelly Day versus our, um, our system. So it's not comparing apples to oranges, but I, I speak with, uh, Chief McCoy over there quite a bit. And when they did their, um, their pay structure, uh, recently, I think they got theirs, I know it hit the news recently, but, uh, talking to him, they actually got their pay raised in February of this year. Um, and they're, if, if you compare hourly rates, it's, uh, comparable. Now they have a step system versus ours where it's a locked-in system. So they could actually exceed if they stay in that rank for however their step system works.
Given our past performance in that regard, they probably will. And Chief, just give me a thumbs up if I'm correct on this, with the pay increase in Ocean Springs. Uh, it's, it's basically the first of a, an annual increase of three percent for the next ten years. Correct? So we could have a great salary compared to them this next year for that matter, but we're, we're just, they're gaining on us. They're competing for your officers that you're trying to hit. Gotcha. Um.
Paul, is that just the, the police and fire? Ocean Springs is everybody?
No, it's just police and fire is what they address.
Three percent?
Yeah, there was a, a piece on that on WLOX sometime last week. What does it cost to outfit a new? I'm just curious, what's it cost to outfit a new firefighter?
Uh, if you figure training, uh, gear, uh, of course, everything's taken price increases. Um, gear is roughly four thousand per set. That's top to bottom, all their, their stuff, not counting just the, the station uniforms. Training is roughly about fifteen hundred, uh, you know, to send to the academy to do all that. And then we do an in-house EMTs, so that saves us a good bit.
Gotcha. So, um, you have paramedics? Do we, I mean, you have EMTs and, and, and speaking with you, you said, yeah, that's pretty much an expectation. If you want to be hired at Biloxi, either you have that endorsement or certification, or you, you agree to work towards that more or less. But you also have some paramedics. So these are, I guess it's a step up in terms of medical care. And do firefighters pay for that additional coursework themselves? Do they? So these are, I guess, it's a step up in terms of medical care and do firefighters pay for that additional coursework themselves? Do they get any additional pay for that?
So of course they can utilize, uh, it's through, uh, Gulf Coast. So basically, our minimum standard now for Biloxi to stay employed with the city of Biloxi is you have to have, of course, your firefighter one thousand one basic course, but you also have to have EMT basic due to the fact that EMS is eighty-five percent of our, our call volume at this point. Um, so that's the, the standard that we've set. Um, there are two levels above that, uh, advanced and paramedic. Um, advanced is about a, all depending on how it's delivered, it's about a one-year course at Gulf Coast. Um, paramedic is a two-year program. Um, so of course they can utilize the tuition reimbursement to pay for that, but the paramedic level, I do know, depending on what's required, uh, it's roughly about another thirty-two hundred to five thousand, um, that they're asked to pay out of pocket. Um, that would be in addition to your tuition reimbursement.
Do we, do we compensate them in any form or fashion for that additional endorsement?
No, sir, not currently. We're in, we're in talks with, uh,
Okay.
you know, about doing a little incentive pay to try to compensate, cause several of our, uh, neighboring cities, uh, and county do compensate for those.
Okay, I know vacation time is a morale issue and, and I'm thinking the same, the same question applies to the police department. I don't know if you have enough firefighters so that folks can pretty much schedule vacation time or they pretty much, my guess is, and I'm just guessing, is that here's where you can take vacation because we, we still have vacancies or we don't have the manpower between people on vacation, people who are ill, people who are injured. I'm thinking that's bumping up your, I call it unbudgeted overtime. That's not what you had anticipated because we have budgeted overtime because of the way firefighters are compensated and the number of hours they work.
Yes, sir.
Correct, so I'm thinking of unbudgeted overtime. I don't know what that runs every year, but I'm also thinking if, if, if you could reduce that figure if you hired additional fire, firefighters, at some point, it makes sense to hire additional firefighters, but I know that when you hire them, you've gotta hire them basic. You can't hire one or two, you've gotta hire enough, I don't know how many, in multiples of three or multiples of nine for all the shifts that you run. So, and I, I guess the question is here, do you let folks know when they can take vacation or can, do they pretty much have some flexibility?
So, uh, typically how we run it is every November, we pick vacation. Uh, calendar goes out for the, for the following year. Uh, you lock in your vacation days, that's guaranteed, can't be taken away, I mean, other than a couple, you know, extenuating circumstances. Um, but, you know, we also have, uh, back when I hired on and we, we had, uh, you know, uh, a larger workforce, uh, compared to the amount of stations. You could get annual leave for those instances where your son or daughter might have an event that you wanna take off, but it wasn't in November.
That's what my purpose is, i- i- in November, what you said, in November, I can schedule and hey, we, we work it out and then we schedule around you with folks who have to work overtime. Uh, Chief, I recall, Chief Miller, I recall at some point, we were talking about, I guess, special events and ordinances and you said some of your guys hadn't had a day off in twenty-two, three, four days and, and I'm thinking tho- those are extraordinary events in Biloxi, but I'm thinking typically, are your guys working weeks at a time without a day?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's not uncommon for an officer to work three weeks straight without a day off because of the events. But we've lost several officers to cities around us, uh, not because they wanted to leave here, but because they were tired and not getting days off, so they would go somewhere else where they could, you know, have a weekend off.
Okay.
I have that comparison, that Ocean Springs compare, pay comparison, if you'd like me to.
But that's, but that's a morale issue coupled now with a pay issue and, and that contributes to the obstacles you're trying to overcome in terms of hiring enough officers to get to that magic number that you're looking for. Okay.
And it's about, it was about almost five thousand dollar difference in entry level in Ocean Springs now, so I was off about a thousand on that.
So right now?
We're, we're in at about, uh, forty, forty-eight, fifty-nine and they're in at forty-five, four-seventy-four.
Okay, um, that's all I have at this point. Any other questions for, uh?
Point out a couple of things if you don't miss them in, under fire, under overtime, um, if you find that, yeah, it, it, overtime number is a big number, five hundred twenty-five thousand.
I, I have a question about that, because typically we under-budget that, or we have in past years. I don't know how we stack up this, this year. I don't know what the numbers look like, cause I don't know what page you're on, but, I mean, historically, I think we're always at a million, give or take a hundred thousand dollars roughly for the police department. And typically, we budget fired about half a million. Do we, have we had any budget amendments to move money to cover overtime? No, we're good. That number's a good number right now, Diana, based on you. Okay, that's all.
I, I just have two short questions, it should take less than a minute. Um, GR one fifty-eight professional services, what is that?
Under, under which department?
Fire, other professional service, it's a grant.
Okay, um, so that is a program, it's a pilot program that we were awarded. At the same time that we got the, uh, the SEBA, our, our breathing apparatus. Uh, we also got roughly about two hundred ninety thousand to develop a, uh, basically a mental health, um, grant is what it was. And we partnered with friends and firefighters out of the Bronx in New York. Um, it took a while to get off the ground, uh, and get moving because, you know, of course, counselors have to get certified in.
Okay.
Mississippi, that sort of thing, so.
So that's like a one-time grant for that program? Is it reoccurring or?
It could be. Uh, like I said, I think us and one other department in the nation received, uh, a grant to see how it works, how it would work, uh, in, in the field.
Okay, second question, uh, this budget, I know you spent a lot of time on it, will this be enough to give you all the resources you need to maintain our, uh, number two fire rating?
Uh, we're hoping so, yeah, it should be.
Not hoping, what, what would make us fall short?
Well, we're hoping that we can maintain, we can compensate, uh, we can hire quick enough to compensate for the retirees. That's really what, um, what we're shooting for. We should be able to do it, yeah. I have, uh, full confidence that we're, we're maintaining that level two rate and if the.
Uh, what, would you tell me which month they come in to?
Sir.
Uh, certify you, what month it is?
Uh, basically, what, the way that it works for the rating bureau, they'll send us a, it's a lengthy questionnaire, um, it's in Excel spreadsheet form and it has, it looks like the budget, it, it's got multiple tabs addressing anything from station location, apparatus, age of apparatus, call volume, training hours, prevention efforts, uh, it's a.
So, so Chief, any high-risk item that is left out of this budget that we need to maintain that number two rating, that's important?
So the, the big, the big things that net us the most points is our, uh, the infrastructure work that's going on. Uh, once it's complete, that should add to giving us better water, um, you know, bigger diameter lines, uh, that sort of thing. And then personnel, that's the other. How many, how many people we can throw at a, and it's a fire rebate, so it doesn't matter on EMS, doesn't matter on recs, so it's pertaining to fire, so they wanna see us provide seventeen people now with the new standard to every fire alarm, to any casino, any house, any fire, any, anything fire-related. They wanna see that many people showing up, which we don't wanna send more units, we just wanna have more people on those.
It's important to point out, we got the highest rating of any other city, of any city i- in, in the state. And, uh, what that does is reduce insurance rates for, uh, commercial businesses and residents, so, uh, that's important that we continue to provide those resources.
Yes, sir.
To make that happen. That's all I got.
One more question.
Go ahead. One, 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 one more place I'd like to point out to you in your book, in your book, and that, and fire, other deaths, uh, death service or death service on fire. Just as a reminder, we still paying for fire station number seven and we're still paying for five fire trucks that are, that were leased purchase. So it is, just, that's what those numbers add up to.
How long are we gonna be paying on the fire trucks, Mike? How many years?
So the, uh, the, the two that you referred to, we got in twenty-twenty, we should have roughly, was that a seven year? That was before my time. That was a seven year, so four more on that. Am I correct in saying that? Uh, and then we just received the three, um, earlier this year, uh, so I think we made one payment on that, so six more years.
It was, they were seven years.
Yeah.
What are they normally last years?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yes, sir, we get twenty years out of them.
Yeah, they haven't paid off until you use them.
Yes, sir.
Alright, Dr. Tisdale, you have one more question?
Sure, sure, I, I neglected to ask, this, this is for fire, fire and police. I'm thinking, I, I also recall, I think Chief Miller, that, uh, you said some of your officers, after some incidences, need somebody to talk to and their families need somebody to talk to and counseling services. And years ago, apparently, I, I don't know how it worked, I know that you know how it worked, but really, we, y- y- your departments have been without this counseling service for support for a number of years now, I think. I don't know what the obstacles are to securing that, but.
When we, when we needed support, we've tried to find it, but it's been very difficult. Uh, we really need a contract with, with some, some facility or, or, or somebody to do the counseling for us. I think it's the same with the, with the fire department. That's the same with the whole city. Uh, very difficult to find anybody that wants to deal, uh, with a municipality now.
How, how do we, how do we go, how would we go about funding that? I mean, is that, I would assume that's out of the.
So it's a workman's comp is how it's paid for in the past and, and apparently that is some of the problem with these, uh, institutions that, that, that do counseling, they don't wanna deal with.
Because they have to deal with workman's comp, so, I mean, if, if we said, hey, the city of Biloxi, when we have officers and firefighters in these circumstances that need counseling, I would think maybe we have a contract on the shelf that, that they can be counseled for three or four sessions or whatever. I don't know what it would cost the city. Is there any reason we can't do that? The city could contract with somebody at a, I mean, bid it out for, for service rates?
I guess, I'm guessing that's gonna be an HR question.
I, I could tell you from this pilot program that we've been dealing with, it takes, it takes quite a bit to, to even get things moving with the funding sitting there. Uh, there's several hurdles that you have to run through, uh, due to counselors being, needing to be certified in the state. There aren't many out there that do this kind of work, especially with public safety officers. Uh, it's, it's, I think it's a nationwide problem, not just a Biloxi problem.
Yeah, maybe, but I know we have a, a number of institutions here and, uh, businesses and, and that's what they do. Why couldn't we contract with one of them just?
Uh, another one of the problems that we ran across is that it, it actually states in, in the ordinance, uh, city ordinance, that it has to be a, uh, a psychologist or a psychiatrist. And the majority of these, these organizations now, uh, confer with a psychologist or a psychiatrist, but, uh, nurse practitioners are the ones that are doing most of the counseling. It would be, we need to make a change, I think, in our city ordinance, for one thing.
If, if you would point me to that ordinance and, I, I mean, so apparently you may have some folks that are being counseled by these nurse practitioner or whoever. Are they effective in what they do based on what you've seen? So if we can't get a, a license, a psych, a licensed psychologist or a psychiatrist, if we've gotta get a special counselor or whatever they're called.
I'm sure there's some that are very capable, you know, we just wanna be careful who, who we selected.
Right, well, I'm thinking if we make inquiries, if we have to tweak our ordinance, then, I mean, I, I just think if our employees need help after these traumatic events, and it's not, you're right, it's not just fire and police, could be something in public works for that matter, that we ought to be able to at least offer that support.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, thank you.
I have a quick question. Chief, how many employees you have in your department? He said he had a hundred sixty-eight. What do you have?
There's, uh, two hundred and secretaries, dispatchers.
Everybody, yeah.
Everybody, mechanics, I think there's two hundred, or two fifteen.
Two hundred and fifteen?
Yes, sir.
A question of both of y'all, how many people y'all feel are gonna retire or leave this year?
I suspect, I suspect at least probably a dozen, so. I'd say minimum of a dozen this year.
How many?
A dozen.
Dozen?
Right, right now, I could tell you seven names offhand and usually you have another surprise, four or five, so I'd say another dozen by December.
Twenty people between both departments, roughly. Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any other questions for either one of the chiefs? Okay, do y'all wanna go forward or do y'all wanna end this and look at, digest everything in the book and come back and ask the rest of the department heads questions next week? Alright, so.
I'm gonna email you, uh, the draft of the non-departmental budget.
Okay.
So that you have time to talk to your, which you're sponsoring and, uh, and have a couple of weeks, that's a couple of weeks down the road.
Okay.
When we come back, we'll come back to department.
Okay, so, um, man, this volume's adjusting itself. Um, so if we can get the things that we requested emailed to us this week, um, the, the breakdown on contractual services as well as, uh, the breakdown that Mr. Tisdale asked for, and then, um, next week, our meeting's at six PM, so do y'all wanna meet at four-thirty prior to that? Is that, is that good for everyone? So we'll have our budget meeting at four-thirty, um, next Tuesday will be our next budget workshop. Do I have a motion?
Not yet, just, just, uh, one other, just a. Just, just a reminder, we still have those special events ordinances out there and I'm thinking it's not, so we don't forget them. At some point, we're gonna have to act on those because some of these events need advance time, so.
So, yeah, we'll do that. So four-thirty next week, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale, all in favor? Six zero.